Okay, we're going to call the January 28th Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence. Michelle, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on, number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any? Yes, we do. 4.1, 2.71, extra item, consideration of amendment number one to the Lake County Standard Agreement number CCC-18-20013 in the amount of $88,000.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I requested that this item be taken up as an extra because I just learned about it Friday, and the state has requested that the board take action immediately on it. It's, if you decide it can be taken up as an extra, it's amending the standard agreement we have with the state for funding they're providing to the county for 2020 census outreach. And originally, they wanted an answer about accepting this additional funding by Friday, and that wasn't possible, so we did agendize it as an extra today with the hope your board would take it up.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board for the motion.
If it meets the criteria to take it up as an extra?
Second.
Okay.
There's a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, as your board knows, our social services staff is heading up a local task force that's dealing with, with community outreach for the 2020 census. They're working with the cities and numerous community agencies and groups. And the state contacted social services staff late last week and offered an additional $13,000 in funding for those outreach efforts, and, which would make the total funding the county would receive from them a sum total of $88,000. And so, there are some specifics in terms of how the additional funding is to be used. It can be for the printing of collateral materials and languages that would help reaching the hard-to-reach populations, focusing on language support based in community assistance centers where people are filling out their census paperwork, executing census outreach in tracks where there are currently no activities planned to do that outreach, and then bolstering existing efforts to count the hardest-to-count populations. So, this seems like nothing but a win-win for the county to receive some additional census funds, and staff's recommendation is that your board approve amendment number one to the Lake County Standard Agreement number CCC-18-20013 in the amount of $88,000. And again, it is for California Complete Count Census 2020 Outreach Activities.
Supervisors, what do you?
Just want to make sure there's no matching funds, there's no returning funds if we don't meet a certain criteria. As long as we do the work that we claim we're going to do for the census outreach, this is money being given to us through the state.
There, the answers to your questions are no, 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 and no. No returning of funds, no matching funds.
Good.
No, this makes a lot of sense. There we go, and we're started. Any public input on this item? All right, seeing none, bring it back to the board. I'd just like to make a comment, obviously, how important the census is, especially our community all across the county. Getting those counts is what allows us to get the federal dollars and other grants that may be coming into our county here. So, it's very important that we get that count, and we count as many people as possible as we move through this. So, I think it's a good positive step.
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, I move to approve amendment number one to Lake County Standard Agreement number CCC-18-20013 in the amount of $88,000.
Second.
All right, motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Five-zero. Moving right along to the consent agenda. We are going to pull item number 5.4 for, to come back at another date. I think that one's coming out. And then also, 5.9, we would like to pull and then readdress as a non-timed item here on the agenda. Are there any other items that would like to be pulled from the public? All right, seeing none, go ahead and entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda 5.1 through 5.13, pulling 5.4 for a later date and 5.9 for later today.
Second.
Did you get through 5.13?
Yeah, you said all those except those two.
Excellent. All right. There's been a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion passes. Public input, do we have any public input today? If you want to do public input, obviously, I think you need to go, if you would please fill out a form before you leave today.
There's some I believe in your drawer.
Is there some in there?
I left them.
Somewhere.
They're already filled out, but...
Yeah, they're already filled out. I just scratched Joe Moss's name off there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm Melissa Fulton with, CEO with the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to hand-deliver a copy of the 2020 Destinations Magazine to each of you. I did, during our District One forum last evening, I left some in the lobby. So, I'm not sure if the inventory for the county has been picked up yet or not, but I'll follow up on that today. And then, normally, the county distributes their inventory of destinations to the libraries around the county, and we'll put out the publicity press release letting members of the public know that they can pick the magazine up at the library if, in fact, they are not members of the chamber. So, thank you for the input from the various departments of the county that help us every year to update, and hopefully, as you go through it, you won't find any mistakes, but I guarantee you'll find something. So, that was all I wished to do for public input, and I'll fill this out.
Thank you, Melissa.
I will say, Melissa, if you need me to help you get some of those to Clear Lake, please get ahold of me, and I can easily pick some up from your office.
I would also like a box, because I think when we go to, like, doctor's appointments and dentist's appointments, it's a good place to leave these. And also, when you're traveling out of town, leave them where you stay, so we can advertise Lake County.
Yes, and we will make those boxes available. And also, for anyone in the public who happens to be watching the meeting today, if you're going to conferences out of county, we make boxes of books available for you to take with you. And if you're hosting a conference in county where you're inviting visitors or peers from other areas to come here, we will make boxes available for you as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, moving on to timed items, what we'd like to do is 6.2, our 9:06 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing Caltrans District One and Conocti Conservation Camp Crews for Outstanding Efforts to Mitigate Wildfire Risk in 2019. And presenting the proclamation, Rob Brown.
I'm going to ask Caltrans folks to come up, and CalFire, please. And while they're coming up, I just want to, you know, preface this a little bit. It seems like forever, but for the last five years, for sure, our county's been full of... Yeah, come on up, Marty. You're getting out of this.
Come on up on stage.
Our county's been full of, out of county, out of state firefighters and a lot of smoke. And, you know, we recognize, we appreciate those that have come from a long ways and our local first responders as well, to do what they can to protect us and our homes and our families. But, I don't think we give enough recognition to those who help us to prevent the fires to begin with. And over this last year, there've been a lot of efforts that have kind of gone unnoticed, and that's why I'm hoping to recognize those some today, at least a little bit. And we, when I leave here at the end of this year, probably, if somebody asks me what my greatest accomplishment has been, I hope it will be to have prevented all of the communities that interface with Conocti from burning down. That's my main hope. I've seen too much of this, and I don't want to see any more of it. And with the help of these folks behind me and many others, I think we can do that. And certainly, this last year, their efforts go to that. I'm not reading the proclamation just yet, because I feel like I have so much to say about this, but the inmate crews who obviously couldn't be here today, and actually, they're out working up Bottle Rock Road, doing an amazing job up there. But, they make up for 40% of the firefighters in California, saving the state taxpayers $1 million, $100 million a year, and that's pretty substantial. But, those are fighting the fires. So, the work that they're doing right now is unbelievable. This last summer, I contacted Marty Sills, who's retired, my old friend from many years ago, and we got him and Paul. We met out on a Saturday out at 281 by the Eli Stage House, and we talked about, you know, cleaning up some roadside out there on the highway to keep Riviera's from burning up. And quickly, we were joined by Jake Hanlon, who's not here today, but he'll make sure he gets the word for us to appreciate his efforts and bringing out the crews. And they did just a tremendous job out there in a quick hurry. And then, shortly after that, we did the Thousand Hands Project. It took a lot of effort. The inmate crews were up in the Black Forest, and they did a great job up there cleaning up and even putting out a little fire that happened. So, but it does happen. So, nobody was harmed in that. And then, Caltrans, we, our volunteers got a little overzealous out there. They said, "Just leave the brush alongside the road, we'll come back and get it later." And I called them, I said, "You got a whole lane of traffic that's blocked. I didn't think this was going to happen." So, anyway, I was chastised by Paul a little bit for letting that happen, but they got out there and they did it, and I just appreciate them so much. So, now, I'll get on to the proclamation. The Board of Supervisors, the County of Lake, would like to recognize the Caltrans District One and Conocti Conservation Camp Crews for outstanding efforts to mitigate wildfire risk in 2019. Whereas, the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, routinely and substantially reduces the risk of wildfires for all Californians by implementing vegetation management practices prescribed in the Penal Code and Streets and Highways Code in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And whereas, since April 1963, the Conocti Conservation Camp, CC27, through cooperative efforts of the California Department of Forestry, CalFire, and the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, CDCR, has valuably contributed to hazardous tree and vegetation removal along public roadways and trails in Lake County. And whereas, in 2019, United States Congressional Research Service reported, report noted 88% of all wildfires from 2014, 2018 were human-caused, and many of those started near road sides. And whereas, in the summer of 2019, Caltrans District One South Area and CC27 crews performed extensive roadside maintenance along California State Route 281, also known as Soda Bay Road, clearing 50 to 100 feet on either side of the roadway in an effort to protect life and property of 12,000 nearby Lake County residents. And whereas, following the 1,000 Hands to Protect Lake County Homes Initiative, during which 300 volunteers removed brush from six miles of roadside in the Soda Bay Corridor, Caltrans District One crews again prioritized timely removal of collected debris from alongside State Route 281. And whereas, these preventive efforts collectively contributed to the safety and well-being of the residents in the area surrounding SR281 and all of Lake County. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby commend, congratulate, and express deep appreciation to Caltrans District One and Conocti Conservation Camp for their extraordinary efforts to mitigate wildfire risk in Lake County and particularly the areas surrounding SR281 in 2019. Such preventive measures are paramount to limiting profound costs and regional disruption associated with large-scale disasters, and we are deeply grateful for the work of all involved. Thank you.
I don't know if anybody wants to say anything, but go ahead.
I think he's inviting you all back on the stage for a photo op.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to our item 6.3, our 9:10 a.m. item, annual update from the Lake County Tourism Improvement District. Yeah, just split up at the chair, however you guys.
So, good morning, Arnold Chairman, and members of the board.
I think it is.
Am I on? So, Larry Galuppi, Chairman of the, or President of the Lake County TID. So, today we'll do a presentation. Brian Fisher, our CFO, is going to be officiating it, and Michelle will be with him.
Can you cut him up tight, please, Larry?
Sure, sir. And then, we do have also other members of our board here.
You've got a microphone right here on the table.
We do have other members of our board in the audience, Wilda and Lynn.
Does everyone want to come up front? I guess that would be the question. We can throw another chair up there.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Brian Fisher. I own an apartment hotel in Kelseyville. Also work on communications for Visit Kelseyville. And this is my workwife, Michelle Scully. We spend a lot of hours together working on these projects. So, I want to introduce you today to Lake County's new tourism logo. Two concentric circles. The center circle is the sun or the moon, both of which shine really bright over Lake County. The outer circle is our air. Also, again, relating back to Lake County's status of having the cleanest air in the country. The triangle is, of course, Mount Conocti, a natural presence that looks over Lake County. The deep blue that runs through the air and the mountain is representational of the 36 ponds and reservoirs and lakes in Lake County: Clear Lake, Blue Lakes, Pillsbury. The type, the county is written in a very artistic, country, and very playful, and very welcoming font. It's a hand-drawn font. California, because there's a Lake County in almost every state in the Union. So, we want to thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your investment into building a destination brand for Lake County. It could not be done without your generous support. And today, we want to share with you our progress. In December of 2018, the Lake County Tourism Improvement Board was seated. There are nine members on the board. Five of us are lodging stakeholders, one for each of the county, Lakeport and Clear Lake, and one casino interest, Larry over here from South County. And Larry did a good job introducing you to the folks. We meet bimonthly throughout the county. We've met almost in every nook and cranny of this county at this point. And our minutes can be found on our website, which is www.discoveryourlake.com. That's the TID's website. Upon our inception, we immediately began building a communication plan and set out, sent out RFPs to over nine prospective creative agencies. A couple of small consortiums in Lake County, the largest branding firm in the world, Landor and Associates, three firms in Sacramento, and a crazy creative agency in Tulsa, Oklahoma, Cubic, that specializes in place-based branding and creative for third-tier destinations just like us. In May of 2019, we contracted with Cubic Creative to build our brand and creative campaign, and we spent the better part of the summer doing just that. In September of 2019, we revealed our new brand and creative to over 100 stakeholders and influencers in the county at Robinson Rancheria Resort and Casino in the middle of one of our first PSPs's. So, Supervisor Crandall, 11th Hour Save was enormous, but the show went off without a hitch. This January, just this month, we again went through another short RFP process and re-enlisted Cubic Creative to build the country's, the county's new destination website. It's going to be our new front door, using industry-best practices, and we're going to ensure that our unique Lake County voice is heard in everything the visitor sees. This spring, early 2020, we're going to launch our new brand and creative in what is called a micro-targeted media campaign around the Bay Area, Central Valley, including Sacramento. Why are those, why those locations? We invested, actually, in a mobility study, which looked at zip-code registrations of smart cars that traveled through 10 different Lake County destinations. The first, this was our first experiencing, using data to help us make a really smart decision. I want to introduce you now to the Cubicans, is what we call them, Amber and Libby. We're fortunate, as a small county here, to be working with Cubic for several reasons. They're, they have world-class experience in place-based branding. They're very process-oriented, laying out a very detailed roadmap that they follow using industry-best practices, and they're also data-driven, making decisions on the numbers and providing the transparency that's required in today's fragmented media world. Amber and Libby came to Lake County on an immersion trip this summer and met over 60 Lake County influencers. They flew over Lake County, courtesy of Bill Brunetti, for a geological tour. They toured Clear Lake with Brandon Disney, and Blue Lakes with Mary Ann Schmidt. They visited South County, the Burn areas, Hidden Valley Lake, Clear Lake, Middletown Arts Center. They took back with them volumes of recorded information to Tulsa to share with their team and produced a 300-page creative brief that we now use as our roadmap. Cubic's many years of place-based branding found that the most likely traveler to Lake County will share personality traits that closely mirror the people who currently live in Lake County. One of our strongest personality traits is that of an explorer. So, we're going to issue a siren call to the explorers trapped in the noisy claustrophobic cities, those yearning to truly find themselves in the warmth of Mother Earth. And here is our creative strategy. With California's cleanest air, America's oldest lake, and the friendliest folks on God's green earth, life in Lake County tends to freshen your perspective. Around here, folks from all walks of life walk together. People are part of nature, not apart from it, and being a bit weird is worn as a badge of honor. If you've ever been, you know. If you never have, come to Lake County and see what makes us clearly different. The first creative here, we put the country and wine country, clearly different, Lake County, California. So, with this, notice the vintage look and feel of this creative. The poster is slightly off-center-ness. It's rustic, it's Western, it's friendly, it's us. California is known for growing nuts. Some of them like to vacation here. Clearly different, Lake County, California. A cowboy and a hippie walk into a bar isn't a joke. It's how we were founded. Clearly different, Lake County, California. We are also in the process right now of building, with industry-best practices, a new front door for visitors to Lake County. The website will embody everything in our brand that is tucked away in that 300-page brief that I mentioned earlier. We'll make investments in hard assets, photography, video, creative, and into tools that allow us, for the first time, to self-administer the site for years to come. And, but the heavy lifting, you guys, is just not over yet, and in some ways, the work is just beginning. Here's a look at our finances through December of 2019. In the top right, you'll see the $25,000 that Michelle Scully secured from Visit California to specifically build our brand. It was part of a fire relief effort that the state set up, and Michelle was smart enough to get on it and get us the money. Next, you'll see that the town of Clear Lake jumped in with a $20,000 investment. Under that is Lakeport with a $5,000 investment. And thanks to all of you, Board of Supervisors, County of Lake contributed $100,000 to this effort through December of 2019. On the TID assessment side, which is on the left-hand side over there, we're receiving some good news and then some kind of confusing news, stuff we've got to figure out as a new entity. Clear Lake TID has come in over estimates at $48,000. So, we used estimates from 1617, and so, we had to forecast what our revenue would be for this organization. They came in over. The county TID, we think, thanks to all of the efforts for, you know, kind of sussing out the vacation rentals, also came in overestimate, overestimates at $94,000. Lakeport's assessment has just been quite a bit lower than what was estimated. Our estimate, our estimation was $36,000, and to date, that amount is a little over $11,000. And so, there's questions that we need to... Well, there's a couple of things that can, that we're trying to figure that out, Rob. One part of it is, there was a one-time assessment, there was a one-time windfall, or, what do you call it? There was a one-time delinquency collection that Lakeport conducted, and those numbers fell into the numbers we used for the estimations. That Civitis used. However, the numbers, you know, there's still more questions, because their first quarter TID was a little over $3,000. That was first quarter, January, February, March. Their second quarter, April, May, June, was $7,800. And then, the busiest quarter for us lodging folks was the third quarter, and their TID came in at $906. So, we're following up. We're trying to understand what's happening, because we need to if we're going to be able to forecast and budget and understand, really, these numbers. So, we're working on that, but we wanted to bring it to your attention. So, here is where we've invested these funds. With a keen eye to efficiency, we've invested the majority of our funds into giving us the building blocks of our brand and creative. So, most of it has been in the investment in Cubic. Brandhound, in the red there, is our current site administrator. They are the, they have been really crucial in keeping our site live and viable, kind of through this whole process. But, we have a lot more, but a lot more investment is needed. We are going to build a website, and most importantly, starting our media campaign to reach tens of thousands of prospective travelers to Lake County, and we will need to sustain that media campaign in order to make it really effective. We're pleased to announce today that we actually have even more help in this process. Robinson Rancheria of Pomu Indians of California has agreed to invest 1.5% of all lodging revenue into the TID. Middletown Rancheria of Pomu Indians of California has agreed to invest $20,000... has agreed to invest $20,000 into our partnership. So our mission is really laser-focused. We want to put heads in beds and build a future, uh, for tourism in Lake County. Uh, we want to thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your help along the way. We couldn't do it without your continued investment. Thank you. Questions?
Can we get the lights? All right, Supervisor Scott.
So, uh, this is actually kind of based on the last slide. And obviously, uh, the tribes would have the final say. But I see that we talk about the hippie and the cowboy and we kind of go old school, but not too old school. We don't highlight the heritage of the area either, which I think is an attractive point for us here. Uh, I didn't see a highlight necessarily on Mount Knokti. I don't know if that was discussed about saying we have a dormant volcano and that's maybe not the best way to advertise for people to come here. Uh, but I think it's what makes our, the beauty of our landscape. If it wasn't for Knokti, it would look very different.
I think it is a selling feature, to be honest with you.
I, I think it's a selling feature too. I just don't know, I, I didn't see it. I saw oldest lake, I saw, uh, best air, but I didn't see that the mountains around us are, are what finishes the beauty of the scenery. Uh, just, just wondering if that's part of the plan as things roll out. I know that you're just beginning and I'm really happy to see at least what you've done so far. Uh, I think there's so many more exciting things to, uh, look at. I mean, in my mind, I'm, I, I went to a place that I think somewhat resembles who we are. Very much so, it's in Switzerland, Interlaken. Uh, surrounded by mountains, lots of bodies of water, a very touristic area. Um, people are paragliding off the top of the mountains. I want to see that off of Knokti. Uh, I, I want to see, uh, OHV being advertised.
I want to see you do that too.
With help from a friend.
You won't see me doing it.
But, but I just think that, uh, that that's what I'm seeing in the future. And this is the foundation to make those things happen. And then to try and get more and more people involved in bringing tourism. Uh, because the hotels are one part of it, the activities that people can take part in. Uh, and, and what part are, are you planning to take in implementing our two state parks and our national monument in getting people to come here for, go out and hike, go out and ride, uh, your mountain bikes, go out and do some OHV in a, uh, national forest or whatever it is that, that is available?
Yeah, I mean, the Explorer, but the, the, I think the quick answer to that is that that is going to be, I mean, the heavy lifting of really explaining what's going to happen here in Lake County is going to fall to our new website. Um, we're trying with this creative that you see to pique people's interest, to get people to think, I've heard of this place, I should, you know, we're using obviously self-effacing humor, uh, which is really effectively used in, in, in a lot of advertising. Uh, but to get them to kind of open that front door and at least go to the front door. So, the website that's under development now will have itineraries. It'll have places and things to do. Um, it'll be something that'll really kind of just like tweaks people into thinking, what could they do? We know that most tourists, once they've kind of reached a destination, they don't use a tourism website anymore. They're on their own now. Now they're just Googling. Now they're looking at everything that they can find off of Yelp, off of any kind of review. Um, and, and so to your point, yes, Bruno, our supervisor, uh, Sabatier. Yeah, we, we will totally be, um, you know, playing up all of the amazing assets that Lake County has on our website. That's, that is where that kind of heavy lifting is going to take place. Um, and so Michelle wants to talk, and I, uh, just a little about our archetype, our brand archetype. Because it is important.
There's obviously, this was a brief summation, but like Brian said, there's three, sorry. A brief summation, but, uh, the Cubicons had 300 pages of things that they compiled on us. And the thing that really struck me was we don't have the marketing dollars to throw spaghetti on the wall and hope it sticks somewhere. And the fact that they're a data-driven company, while on one hand you can think data is kind of disturbing that people know everything about you. They also, um, will, like Brian said, laser-target who our most likely audience is. And they did that by figuring out what is the essence of us. And it's an explorer archetype. So our, as they say, siren call would be to like-minded people. People who would throw their kayak on the back of their jeep. They'd go off-roading, they'd hike up bogs, they'd be looking for Lake County diamonds. We, we need the kind of people who are like, kind of roll up your sleeves like we are and go find stuff and get dirty and go outside. So that, that mode of, um, discerning who we are was really powerful. And I thought it's going to be really cool because we have all of these hidden gems. Some aren't hidden like Knokti. And people were freaked out. They're like, where's the lake? And we're like, well, there's Knokti because Knokti very rarely gets forefront. Um, so we've had, you know, people say it should be more blue, it should have a lake. I really like the fact that it's kind of off, off kilter and that we focused on Knokti in the, um, logo itself. So it, it's an exciting thing and this like really only scratches the surface of it. But in towards, um, our indigenous, um, culture here, the, the three, um, mockups that Brian showed are just mockups. So our campaign is, is really yet to be developed. So very appreciative of that observation.
I like where it's heading.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Scott?
I would just like to thank you. I know this was not an easy road to go down. There was a lot of hard work to get to where we are. Um, I, I love your ideas of not trying to make us look like something we're not, but using our strengths and, and using those in a humorous way. Um, I think it's very important that we need to be looking at rebranding ourselves and, um, for the community to take pride in what we have here. And I think this is definitely going to help us and I'm very excited.
Supervisor Brown? Well, I don't, I appreciate, uh, the comments that, uh, that Bruno had. I don't, I don't happen to have that. I'm sorry. I appreciate the comments that Bruno had, you know, the observations. But I, I didn't pick up on those until, until he mentioned it because they, they weren't highlighted as a... Nothing in here is highlighted to me as to be critical of. I, I have been very high, I've had a high level of criticism for the marketing program run by the county because there's, it's just, the government's not set up to do that kind of stuff. It's not, not set up to react to things and to market. You guys are, is a really good model, I think, that we're headed in a really good direction here. And, um, I've been very fortunate the last couple of years to do a lot of traveling throughout the United States. In fact, according to Facebook, I hit 100 separate locations that I've checked into here in the last two years. But, and I think there've been more than that. But the thing that I always notice, and Angela and I, as we're traveling, we think about this, you know, what could Lake County, could Lake County do this? And what we do is exactly what you said. We're going to an area, what is there to do there? What is there to restaurant? You Google that kind of stuff. We don't look at any guides, we don't, hotel brochures, none, none of that stuff. It's all about, about this. And I think Lake County, I, I've, I've come up with a term that I use. And I think Lake County is a really good example of it when you come up to Lake County to visit, that, that the road doesn't take you to the destination, the road is the destination. So when you get in your car and you go to Knokti and you go to Middletown, you go, you know, all these different areas that we have, there is not one single place until Knokti opens up. There really isn't one single place of the casinos, but that's not, I don't think that's the intention of, of that. It's just to have people come and just sit there. We want them to see, see all of Lake County. And I think that's exactly what you're doing. I honestly didn't know that you, your level of involvement with the Visit Kelseyville, but that, that's my favorite site to see pop up. I love it because living here all my life, it, it brings up either old memories or things that I wasn't aware of. And it's, it's, it's a very good, uh, it's like, uh, there's a magazine out called, uh, Reminisce. You know, I don't know if you've ever seen it. It's really cool, it comes up with old stuff, you know. When we used, when we were kids, we thought we were poor. Now apparently we were rich because we had these, all these old antique cars and stuff. So, so you're looking at that, but that's what that Visit Kelseyville website is like. And I see this kind of emulating that, that you see other areas of Lake County, not just Kelseyville. But it's very interesting history that, you know, we're trying to attract tourists, but we're also trying to get people in Lake County to go do some things that they'd never done before. There's a, there's 60,000 people that market there. Get people to go do things and spend time. When I go up Knokti, I go up Knokti a lot. I always run into somebody up there that just came up just for the, for, for the mountain. Even though, you know, may not be on here, they, they're coming up for that. And then they're stopping at Studebaker's and they're, and then somebody's saying, you should go out and check out Highland Springs or you should go here. It's a, it's this word-of-mouth thing that, that we're able to do within ourselves. I've talked to people and said, you should, you need to check this out, check that out and, uh, go down to Harbin Springs and say hi to Moke. But it's, I, I love it. I'm, I'm, uh, this is probably the most enthusiastic I've felt about a marketing effort for the county that, that I've ever had. So I, I really appreciate that. And I think, uh, I see the enthusiasm you guys have and the passion. And I think that's going to carry over for, for years to come on a lot of things that we have to offer in the county that, that, uh, we haven't, we haven't realized its potential yet.
I, I want to thank you so much for your words because I know you've been a tough sell. And, and Supervisor Scott, I think what really resonated with us, and there are people in the audience who actually cried and they can stand up and admit it. But we get so much heat from being called this and that. And people were like, Oklahoma, why'd you get people from Oklahoma? And we're like, well, it's an RFP process, so they can come from wherever. But I think what really struck us was the time that they took.
Many of us call Oklahoma the old country, so it's not really, a lot of us came from there.
Good point. They think we're like, uh, fellow tribe members. Anyway, it felt really good to feel like they really invested the time to be, to know us, like flying over, floating, and they were joking about how many things that they left here crying. And part of it was happiness and part was they finally let go of us. But I mean, we like wrung it out of them and wanted them to really get a sense of the heterogeneous complexity in the beauty of who the people are in Lake County. And it would, none of this would have happened if you guys hadn't looked at this whole process. Like Supervisor Scott said, the TID process was lengthy, it wasn't free. It was really a step out of the lane of, of historically how things had been done. Um, I want to thank the, the Chamber of Commerce for being a, a vocal advocate of this whole process because it did change classically things that we've done. And also stress that the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program, we're now, uh, supportive of that as well because they're natural partners for the experience. And, um, it's just been a lot of work, some of it frustrating. But working with this team that's on the TID board is really extraordinary. And we do meet twice a month and seeing it in the hands primarily of the industry. And like Supervisor Brown said, people who are the ones who put the heads in beds. And then, um, Brian told me this morning, you were talking about Supervisor Brown. It's not just to guests, but every head in a bed, like $1, the industry standard is $2 spent elsewhere. So this overflow onto those of us who live here too, going out and spending money in our businesses is only a win-win. And without your support, we wouldn't be in this place. So it feels really awesome to be able to showing you t-shirts.
Yeah, where do we get one of those?
We're working on, uh, well, again, we're being very lean and mean. Um, we're, we're, I mean, we've got a sticker for each of you today that... But we're really being efficient with our dollars.
And it sticks really well to a t-shirt.
Yeah, we, we are also the, the Board of No. We say no to about everybody that comes before us for everything. Because we really want to keep our mission focused because we really feel we're at this kind of game-changing moment for the county where we can really build tourism here. And we can, you know, we've got to stick with this. We've got, the hard work is kind of getting underneath our wings. Um, and we're going to really stay laser-focused on what we're supposed to do, bringing people in from outside of the county to enjoy it.
You can put it on a water bottle, that's for goodness.
Your computer.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I, before I moved up to Lake County in, in 88, I lived in San Jose and I came up with my family who's from the Bay Area. So I noticed that you are, um, taking a lot of measures to attracting people from the Bay Area and Sacramento. And I think that's very important. I know that when I first came up here, I, you know, I didn't really realize that we were trying to be, uh, move up here and be part of a tribe. I just thought that was my family and we were visiting them, I was younger. And so when I see, when I, but when I came up and swam in the lake and did all sorts of things in the hills and all of those type of attributes that this county brings to us, I was just like, I fell in love with the place, I always wanted to come back. I couldn't wait for summers, Christmases to come back here. And so when I moved up here, you know, it was bittersweet because I loved San Jose when I was a kid. But at the same time, I loved it up here. My family was here, I made new friends. And so I, I do, I do like the work that you put into it. I've been a part of some of the meetings that we've went to here and there. Um, I appreciate Bruno's statements because he took the words right out of my mouth. I think that when we're, when we're focusing on people from the Bay Area or Sacramento, there's a lot of diversity. And so we have to show that there is diversity here as well. But at the same time, you know, you're doing what you can with what you have. I noticed this brand, like the, this, the, the, how this looks. I seen something very similar over in Mendocino County. I don't think it was Mendocino County, but it was like Mendocino Lake or something. And I was like, I'm going to take a picture of this, I'm going to get it to you to show you. But it's really, I noticed that it's in different places. Umpqua Bank kind of looks similar if you look at it. And it's very simple, but it's very, you know, it kind of, for me, it's attracting, you know, because of that simpleness. But also one more thing is the North Shore. One thing I think we can, we can take advantage of is, is that's the only highway locally that, that goes against the lake, you know. And I always, I always want to do like a selfie video of me driving over in Clear Lake Oaks, but I don't want to get in trouble. But, you know, if you really do, if you see the lake passing you, it's really cool. You know, um, I don't know, it's just, just things to think about, you know. But that is one of the biggest highlights I like to attribute is the, the Highway 20 going across the lake, so, yeah.
So you need somebody to take that video for you. But that's called, I have to think, there's so many acronyms. You, user-generated content? Anyway, it's really compelling. So when you do get somebody to take that video for you, when we do move to the social media stage, user-generated content is one of the ways because it shows like a more authentic feel because it's really somebody doing it. And Supervisor Brown, since you go to 100 spots, you can also do user-generated content. But that's the kind of...
Mine's degenerate.
It'll, it'll have to get vetted. But that's the kind of really forward-thinking, modern, um, use that Cubics introduced us to also when we get to that part.
And just also to address really quickly, um, we are, we've also enlisted, um, a trademark law firm to trademark our new brand, um, as well as our clearly different so that we won't run into issues with people using it. Uh, we've already seen a couple of imitations of not exactly our brand, but of our creative out of Sonoma and out of Mendocino. So people really have, you know, they, they're, they're paying attention. Uh, so we want to make sure we lock stuff down so that we can have this trademark brand, uh, for many, many years to come. And t-shirts.
So I, I have two questions because obviously this is still in the works to really throw out there to, to the public. At what point do you get your baseline or do you already have a baseline to see that this mission is working to increase the heads in beds?
So we don't really have in the county the ability to do, uh, occupancy studies. We don't really clearly know what our occupancies are. There's a lot of sophisticated ways to get those numbers, but that's kind of out of the reach of us right now. Um, we are looking very strongly at all of the data on all of the metrics that we currently have, uh, through both our social media, our website. And then we're really going to need to kind of almost rely anecdotally on how people are going to be doing during, um, you know, the seasons. We know we've got an occupancy problem in Lake County. We've got rooms, we've got plenty more rooms, uh, that are taken on any given week, especially during the midweek. So, um, we're going to just watch in our own industries where that's, I guess that's why the four, five of us, um, on the board, um, are stakeholders. So we'll, we'll be looking at it really closely. And, um, and then one day, we really want to be able to understand what, uh, the county's occupancy rates are. And that's just a matter of really reporting, um, from, from the business. And we've got to win that respect from these folks. We've got to earn, uh, that respect and that's what we're going to try to do.
Okay. And my second question is, other than money, because that's an easy answer, what can we do as a Board of Supervisors to support what you're doing to make sure that you, you have the success that you're anticipating to have?
I would say with, and this is kind of stepping out of the TID role. In my role at Kelseyville and Building and Communications Program there, I would like to see all of your communities and the towns in your community, build communication programs of their own. Because as Rob said, they show up and they just start Googling places. They just look for things. And we've made sure that if anybody looks at anything in Lake County, they get our website, Visit Kelseyville. But we need all the other communities to start doing that and just to start beginning to tell their story and to create their voice. And it doesn't have to be sophisticated, it just needs to be a beginning. Um, I know that Lower Lake, um, is doing a great job on social. Uh, there's some stuff, I believe, out of merchants in Lakeport, but we need more of it. So truthfully, that will help the entire picture once we get those visitors here. And, um, and, and we in Kelseyville would love... And, and we in Kelseyville would love to help whoever those influencers are in your communities build that program. It's not complicated, it just takes people with kind of passion and the ability to just, you know, make it happen.
And I take it that eventually those websites or Facebook pages could be linked to your upcoming website?
Everything would link. If we could in-
Because it's all integrated.
Yeah, if we, if we like send people in county to each other, we just had a meeting about this last night at KBA and we just need to all do a better job tying into each other, sharing each other's information, putting everything into events and really just, and, and when you start doing that, Google, the largest search engine in the world, gobbles you up. They love you. You're creating new content for them and so everything rises to the top. We no longer want the US, whatever it is, the Wikipedia for Lake County to be the first thing somebody sees when they Google Lake County. We're going to shoot the Wikipedia, actually it's not a bad Wikipedia, but it's kind of a sign of weakness. We want them to come to visit Lake County and see what we have to say, so.
And we have somebody in Clear Lake, David Claffey, who's been joining the Rotary and he's created downtownclearlake.com.
That's really good.
And he's really, he's bringing a lot of abilities and skills from the tech business to help us out, so.
Support him every step of the way because that is, that is how we're going to all rise up a lot.
Right.
All right. My final comment, obviously everybody's weighed in here, I think it's an excellent program, supported it from the beginning, telling our story. I know as a Board of Supervisor, we go around rebranding ourselves, telling our story is one of the most important things. There's so much technology out there, geo-fencing, geo-targeting, there's so much stuff, Word, stuff with Google where they can pull it up as soon as it's typed in, there's so much information. We do this all the time as marketing, as far as occupancy rates, the average daily fee, everything, you can find out everything. We do a great job at Twin County Casino and Hotel, bragging about Larry because he runs our operation. But targeting your market is very important. And as people drive by on five and one-on-one, all that information, all those opportunities that are out there by the website and the technology that we have available to us, it's going to be so important as we move forward. I really think our market is all the folks that are driving to Tahoe, why go there? We have casinos, we have the lake, we have everything besides the snow opportunities during the winter. Why drive for five hours when you can drive two and experience a beautiful community right here in Lake County? So, what's that?
We had snow last week.
Yeah, not, well, yeah, you could do some skiing, but not like they're looking.
Shut school.
But I really think those real markets are, you know, this is going to give us that opportunity to do it. I'm excited, attending whatever meetings, I know we have great representation on the Board, but really bringing our hotel associations together, our hotel businesses is really going to give us the opportunity to drive this market. I want to see a video in every hotel room that's running about what is in Lake County, not only on Google and on the website, but I think every hotel should be running the same story. These is what we have here in Lake County, connected to the, our Lake County TID and everything that we're doing, so I'm excited. Excellent work and we're moving in the right direction. And Rob, you hit on the point, you know, you know how hard it is to sell somebody that's coming from a flat area to drive over Mount St. Helena? It's pretty tough, but you know what that is? It's a beautiful scenic drive with a beautiful national park up there, state park on top of it where you can hike. But then once again, how many people have hiked up Mount St. Helena? Quite a few, quite a few times. Now come and experience Mount Conocti, which we've opened up here in the middle of Lake County and really enjoy what we have. And that's a beautiful sight up there as you stand and look 360 around this county on beautiful days. So I'm excited about the opportunity. Marketing ourselves, telling our story of who we are is the most important thing that I think we can all do, so I'm excited.
And I'm going to add something to that because I looked it up because I've been reading into this, just in 2019 on New York Times, uphill skiing is a thing because people are sick and tired of the lines at all the places, everybody goes downhill skiing. And our national monument is packed with snow during the winter. We could attract people to do some of those cardio activities, it's possible.
Excellent. Public input, I know we have some folks in the audience, can we do some public input on this item?
Jessica Pisca with Cabaret Council. I just want to say, I've sat in on many of their meetings, this is an excellent team doing excellent work and they are laser-focused on their job and huge props to you guys.
Thank you, Jessica.
All right, any more public input? Excellent.
Just a quick thank you to the Board members who showed up today and everybody who's helped us. It's totally a community effort here and we've got some really smart people, we've got a lot of doers and we're going to keep busy.
Yes, go ahead and show.
Bruno, when you touched on uphill skiing, part of me was like, what? But I'm going to look it up. But, but you said cardiovascular and I was thinking Supervisor Scott about all of our health issues. And it'd be nice to see if there was a way to tie this in later, you know, it's like get out, there's the get outside, get outdoors initiative and then maybe have stacked under that, these are the things, you know, from the, they're redoing, is it Austin Park with workout stuff? I mean, it'd be kind of cool for people in the county to kind of take this overarching concept of explore and be outside and explore your own county and these are ways you could go for a little walk, you could do a workout, but anyway, it's just something I've been thinking.
Get off your assets.
Yeah, we'll tell Cubic that one.
All right, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate all the hard work. Okay, moving right along, that takes care of our timed items. Go ahead and move to, what I'd like to do is take up item 5.4, which we pulled off of the consent calendar, so go ahead, Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you want to read the item?
Oh, yeah.
I think you mean 5.9.
5.9.
5.9, I apologize. Yes, 5.9. Approve Amendment 1 between the County of Lake and the Bennett, Omalu pathology for a five-year cost plan and fee schedule for pathology services at an estimated cost increase of $68,400 and authorize the chairman to sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's just a simple typographical error that needs to be corrected and so if you go to the documents associated with this item, there's a list of three, the, they're all entitled Omalu, but this, it's the last one, Omalu Amendment, and then it's got a number, the last three digits of that number are 14. If you would open that one and go to the second page, you'll see that this is likely a boilerplate type of agreement that is used in various counties. And so there are four spots where the Mendocino County's name was used instead of Lake. And so staff's recommendation is rather than to hold this item up, is to simply make those corrections and have the chair initial each spot where those corrections are made.
Just as they are in the new version of it.
That's it.
Making those corrections. So at this time, would be, any comments, questions? Any public input on this item? Bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Amendment 1 between the County of Lake and Bennett-Omalu pathology for a five-year cost pack, plan and fee schedule for pathology services at an estimated cost increase of $68,400 with the amendments to change Mendocino to Lake and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Moving right along the agenda, let's go to item 7.2, consideration of the following So the appointments are for the Lower, Lower Lake Cemetery Board. And in that position, we have Cheryl Craddock and Harry T. Chase Jr. for the Lower Lake Cemetery, East Region Town Hall, Earth. We have James Burton. And then Glenbrook Cemetery, we have Bob Bostick and Frank J. Dehaven. And Lake County IHSS Public Authority Advisory Committee is Inez Winkus. And Emergency Medical Care Committee is Stephen J. Shepherd.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and start if I, if you want me to.
Go ahead, Rob.
There were, there, Harry Deefenbaugh was the other one that-
Oh, I didn't see, sorry, I missed one.
Yeah, that's fine. So for Glenbrook Cemetery District, I move to reappoint Harry Deefenbaugh, Frank Dehaven and Rob Bostock.
Second. Motion second. Any, sorry about that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Do you want to-
If you could pick it up for me, Rob, I'd really appreciate that.
Yeah, I move to, move to appoint, reappoint Cheryl Craddock and Harry Chase Jr. to the Lower Lake Cemetery Board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Go ahead.
So I'll go ahead and motion to appoint James Burton to the East Region Town Hall Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, is there any public input on this issue or the others? All right. Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
And then I will motion to appoint Stephen J. Shepherd, is that already, is that one already done or no?
No.
Stephen J. Shepherd to the EMCC Advisory Board.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's it, right?
No, there's, yeah, and I'm going to declare conflict on that, but I'm not going to leave for that, I just, I can abstain.
You're just going to abstain?
Yeah, I'll just abstain.
Okay, I think you're probably conflict-free anyway.
Yeah. On this one, yeah.
Do you want me to motion again? So I'll motion to appoint Inez Winkus to the IHSS Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstain? Motion passes four, zero, one. All right. Weekly calendars, 7.1, Supervisor Weekly Calendar, Travel and Reports. Tina, go ahead and start.
I'd like to start with reports. I attended the Kelseyville Fire District Meeting a couple of weeks ago and there were some constituents concerned about insurance issues, losing their insurance or their insurance is going up. So I told them that I would bring it up at the Disaster Council and Supervisor Simon said that he would bring it up, that issue taken under the fire risk reduction. So I just wanted to let everybody know the path that that has followed and then Supervisor Simon's going to report on his meeting at the fire risk reduction concerning that issue. Today after the meeting, I will be returning many phone calls and emails that I have tomorrow. I'll be in the office in the morning and then have a Hope Rising meeting at 3:00 and then we'll be attending a pizza fundraiser for Seroptimus down in Lower Lake at 5:00 Thursday. I'll be in the office in the morning and then attending the MHSA three-year program planning meeting at 11:00. And then we'll come back into the office after that and then volunteering at the warming center that evening. On Friday, I have a meeting, meeting with a bunch of constituents in town, trying to look for resources and things for our children to do in our community. On the first, I will be attending the Lake Family Resource Center Wine and Chocolates event and then back here on Monday.
All right, Supervisor, it's about to end.
So I'm going to go back a little bit, just because I think it's important for us to know where we are with such things. So LAFCO meeting, we are, we approved of John Benoit, the Executive Director of LAFCO to go ahead and find a neutral party to review the analysis of the annexation that was submitted by Lakeport, the county had also submitted their rebuttal to Lakeport's submission as far as how they factored in all the costs and how everybody would be whole, because that is the concept behind LAFCO is during an annexation, there's, we should remain whole in a sense that we're, anyways, I'll leave it at that rather than defining it. It should be a fair exchange, how about that? And so that will come back to us again to move forward. Later on, we did the AVA, as you know, we kind of got kicked off the AVA and then we had to spend, I think it was $15,000 to get back on the abandoned vehicle abatement program. I believe that we're done paying off the $15,000. We've been seeing incremental increases every quarter as far as the amount of money we're receiving from the state for this. So it's looking much better. Before we had maybe $300 trickling in, now we're getting in the thousands of dollars trickling in every single month, so that's really good. Also had, what I think is important for us to finish, and I think it's going well from my perspective, might be a different perspective from Supervisor Brown, but our hemp committee meeting, I feel like where there's a lot more consensus than there is friction between parties in our conversation and I think we're headed in the right direction. Also met-
I don't disagree with that, I think there, I think there is, yeah.
Yeah, I feel we're not going to be continuing the conversation for much longer. I think eventually something's going to come to the Board real soon so that we can go ahead and look at certain regulations. Also did meet, I know I vocalized in public about 4290 and the road code, the code for fire-safe roads from the state of California. I did meet with Community Development and we will be bringing something back to the Board to review. I think everything felt positive for me and the direction we're going for that, so we'll This week, I thought I had something else earlier on Thursday. My Wednesday's pretty wide open, planning on going to the Mental Health MHSA three-year program planning meeting. I think it's important to see what's going on there and how, how things are being planned. Then Friday, again, we have our hemp meeting that starts at 10:00. And looks like there's a PG&E PSPS committee pre-meeting also later on that afternoon. And I know I'm the alternate, but I've asked that I can at least sit in and keep quiet and listen just so I can be up to date as to what the conversation is about. And also I think it's posted and noticed, so I think that's perfectly fine. Other than that, Middle Creek Project Restoration Meeting coming up on the third. And we are trying to get, we did a contract with Paragon to purchase the properties. We are looking to have a conversation with them, I'm not sure, I don't believe it'll happen on the third, hopefully it'll happen soon, but we did find out good news from the Army Corps of Engineer that we can purchase partial properties rather than having to get the entire property. So if, if the project line bisects the property itself, then we can request to purchase only a portion of that property to meet the project limits and not have to buy an extra 30 acres on the side of that. So at least that gives us some lenience where maybe we can have some money savings when purchasing properties so that the $15 million that we receive from the state can go a little further. That also, we just had this discussion internally, could mean that some of the properties we did purchase entirely that aren't needed entirely, maybe we can sell back a portion and split it off to again replenish our pot to be able to purchase more properties. So the conversation continues and then I'll be back here again on Tuesday on the fourth.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes, so I'd want to double check and make sure that we're still on today for Space Committee and Fleet Management meeting? Okay. And was that, those times, were they set or were they dependent upon when we ended here?
The latter, but we do need to have agenda review before they start. And so what is, do you have time constraints today?
No, I just want to know what time to be here.
Well, I think we can judge that when we get done with closed session and go from there.
Okay, thank you. And tomorrow, I'm meeting with Representative from Bottle Rock Power Plant to go over what their plans are up there. They've asked for a meeting and so I'll be meeting with them tomorrow afternoon. An appointment in Santa Rosa on Thursday and then on the, on Friday, I'll have the hemp meeting and the PG&E PSPS meeting that's scheduled and that's, that's it.
Supervisor Crandall?
All right, so today after, following the Board of Supervisors meeting, I'll be meeting with a local business owner from the North Shore. Then I have a call to another constituent that I have to make some calls with some folks. Tomorrow, Wednesday, the 27th, the AAA special- Tomorrow, Wednesday, the 27th, the AAA special meeting that we have at Upland Bank, is that?
Yeah, I'm gonna miss that meeting, but, because I have labor negotiations all day tomorrow, but it looked like they had a quorum without me.
Okay, and so I'll, so I'll be at that. I have a conference call in the afternoon following that meeting concerning AB 52. Thursday, I'll be meeting with some constituents on the North Shore. Friday, constituents as well. And Monday, I'll be at the Middle Creek Restoration Meeting with Bruno, and figuring out how we can get that ball moving faster, get the lake filtered more, so.
I did have one other thing.
Go ahead, Rob.
So, later this afternoon, after I'm finished with all this, I'm gonna go by the new Redwood Credit Union, they opened yesterday down in Lower Lake, and so I was invited to come down there today and take a, take a look around the place. They're gonna do, be doing a more official opening down there, yeah, so, but I'm gonna go down and check that out, so that's, that's kinda big news for South County.
Encourage many folks to go in and check it out.
Yeah, for sure.
It's a great project.
That's why I wanted to make sure it was mentioned here.
Okay, after today's meeting, closed session, we have a gender review, Space Committee and Fleet Management, that'll happen as time permits. Tomorrow, Wednesday, I'll be down in my district. Later tonight, do have meeting around 5:30 with some constituents in South County. Tomorrow, we'll be down in my district most of the day, returning phone calls, and there's a couple of jobs, or construction sites I wanna go out and visit for constituents. And then Thursday, down in my district. Friday morning, I will be over at the Mendocino College with Senator Maguire to talk about the CTE, the grant that was given to Mendocino College to really build a workforce for our laborers, and also any other construction jobs and opportunities, training that's gonna happen here in Lake County at our Mendocino campus, but it's also gonna be happening over Mendocino. So, we'll do a news conference in the morning over at Mendocino College at 9:30 a.m. with Senator Maguire, and then later on the afternoon, the PG&E, PSPS committee pre-meeting. Also have on Wednesday at 1:30, I missed that, is the RDA, Redevelopment Agency, our yearly meeting, we're having that at 1:30 here in the courthouse. And then, just to follow up on a couple of meetings, to touch on the Risk Reduction Authority meeting, just an update on that, we have as a committee, or as a JPA, we have applied for a $20,000 grant to NCO to see if we can get someone to come on as a part-time director, so hopefully we'll be successful with that, that we'll know in February. We'll also be going back to North Bay, rebuild North Bay, and filling out for a $5,000 grant, one that we got last year for outreach and workshops that we'll be doing, so we're excited there. Yesterday, we did have some folks attend the meeting from the Riviera and other folks concerned about the insurance issues. For the Risk Reduction Authority, what we kinda talked to them about was, long-term, would we, we'd be looking to, I believe, work through some type of a certificate program that folks could work through our program and other agencies, and to come up to take to their insurance to help them hopefully get a reduction on their insurance. A conversation came up about, obviously, staffing, fire department there in, in the Riviera's. That's something above and beyond our capabilities, but the conversation was had about a potential opportunity for folks in that community to do a community action plan maybe, and look at doing something to fund a, a local, the local fire department or something to help fund that opportunity. So, those conversations we're at, we'll keep it on the agenda as we move forward, to have the conversations, but I thought it was a good conversation. It is a huge issue for all of Lake County, the insurance issue, so it's something we're gonna work together on and try and collaborate to make it better for the folks living here. To follow up on the AVA report that Bruno gave, you know, when it first came on the board in 2017, we started the program again, we weren't suspension, we had about $300,000 we had to spend to get out of suspension. Glad to say, we have finally made all those accomplishments, and we did have to pay one last reinitiation fee of $15,000. Now that's done, and the program is up and running again, and it's, there were hundreds of cars towed throughout the county in each jurisdiction, Lakeport, Clear Lake, and all the unincorporated areas. It's a good program, and we are going to continue to move that along, and really trying to make that viable program to, once again, be cleaning up the bite in Lake County. So, it's always a challenge to tow the RVs, though, that's something we're working on right now as...
I stare them down as they drive into the county.
So, that's basically the report that I have today, so we'll go ahead and move on to...
I forgot to mention something.
Oh, go ahead.
So, Saturday, I don't know if you mentioned it, about the Lake future at New Paradigm College, we attended...
Oh, no, I didn't.
Yeah, we, we, there was a, we attended the meeting over at the New Paradigm College in Daniel Sheehan and another, another lady, I don't remember her name, but they gave, they gave a lot of presentations about alternative energy sources and collaborating with other counties that are already in the process of doing so. We made a lot of good networking connections, and we had a lot of problem-solving discussions about how we can attack that here in Lake County and move forward to being less dependent on the power companies and whatnot, and, you know, bringing that forward to Lake County. So, that was a good event to attend, just wanted to mention that.
Go ahead, Rob.
So, you, you mentioned, because you mentioned about the fire department, Kelseyville, I wanted to bring up one other thing, because Tina asked me if I could do an update on the benefit zone today, and I was going to. I reached out to staff to get statistics on what's happening, and it was a little underwhelming on what's happened, so I've asked that it be on the agenda for next Tuesday, to not just give an update, but kinda get some, reinforce some consensus on the board on the priorities and that type of thing. So, that's coming up, and at the same time, with the issue to the fire department, I could be happy to talk to you about that, maybe get Joe Huggins involved. They have property that's been donated to them there, but they need to, and building, building a fire department's not a big deal, it's staffing.
Yeah.
And so, I've, you know, I've worked with him in the, in the same context as the benefit zone, but more ongoing, where they pay so much per lot to pay, that goes directly towards staffing of a fire department in that area. I've got, done a lot of research for them, I've given them all the information on how many lots there are out there, how much money would have to be charged per lot per year, so, you know, we're just kinda waiting on them to do something with that, that information, but it might be worthwhile to, does, does he come, does Chief Huggins come to those meetings?
He wasn't, there, no.
It might be worthwhile to invite him to just come and do a presentation, because it is a big issue out there. It's not, it's not even, insurance reduction would be nice, but keeping insurance is where we're at right now. There's people out there that are being canceled, and, and not only that, but people can't sell property because the new owners can't get insurance. So, so we're experiencing that throughout the county, but mostly out there, just because it's just outside that four or five mile barrier, just barely out, and so, so that's the issue that they're having right there, and it can be resolved, but it's, again, you stated, it's not, you know, Kelseyville Fire Department, or any of the fire departments for that matter, their own entity, and it's gonna be something that they're required to do that we can support, but we can't do it for them, so...
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, I think, I thought a great point was brought up today by Supervisor Scott was, just the increases people are experiencing, probably cheaper to keep that money here local than paying extra on the insurance, and may be able to be a win-win for everybody. So, Rob, thank you for that information. And all, everybody, all fire departments are invited to this, and it just depends who can get there and again. So, I know we do have a dial-in option.
What I'm saying, I'm suggesting maybe you have an agenda item specific to that.
Yeah.
Not that any other part of the county is not important, but it's just, you know, for me, it's obvious that, that, that whole area there that has not burned, and hopefully will not, is highly critical right now.
It's a priority for all of us.
It really is. And so, you know, get actively bringing them in, and even CalFire, for that matter, CalFire maybe could put a station in there, man, or help, something, I don't know, there's options available, but we, we can support them, but we can't do it for them, so.
Yeah, and I did attend the, I missed one thing, too. I missed on, last Friday, attended Dr. Pace's promised energy proposal that was done at Lake County Office of Education. I thought it was interesting. You know, as far as battery backup and other things, we have a long ways to go, they were talking four in eight hours, and we're talking about 48 to 72 hours on most of these things, so, but an interesting opportunity, I think that we need to look at all avenues as we move forward to make changes in how we get energy here for our customers. All right, that's it. Thank you very much for your reports. Okay, I think we've covered all the items on open session here, we'll be going into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, just wanted to let you know that 8.3 with regard to PG&E will have to be put over for one more week.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, moving on, besides with 8.3, which will be put over to February 4th, 8.1, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Chief Negotiator M. Long, County Negotiators Carol Hutchinson, Pam Semick, and Employee Organizations LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSEA, and LCSMA. Item 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Flash versus Lake County District Attorney's Office. 8.3 will be put over until February 4th. Let me still read that? No, okay.
Have you referenced it?
All right, 8.4, Conference with Legal, Legal Count, Legal Counting Decision, Legal Counsel Decision Whether to Initiate Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5456.9D for two potential cases. All right, with that, we're going to closed session, take a five-minute break.